All right, I'll call the meeting of the Free Town Board of Selectmen for August 19th to order, being that it's five o'clock. Is anyone recording the meeting? Recam. All right. First item on the agenda would be the discussion and action on awarding, revaluation.
It's actually the finance committee first.
Oh, pardon, yeah. All right, first of all, well, yes, Tim will correct, thanks, Tim. The first is the finance committee in the discussion on mailing to town residents. So Gary?
Am I supposed to present something?
Well, we're, the idea is...
Is to have some sort of agreement on a process for joint mailing?
Right.
Gary, you want to come up here?
I need somebody to take minutes. So I guess we need some ideas as to how to go about putting together joint mailing, how to pay for it, and things like that.
Tim had done some research a couple of weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
And maybe you can review it for Gary again.
Worked out to be about eighteen cents per address. I was using the every door direct service from the post office that gave around three, three thousand addresses, which is roughly the same number as the head of households, so it's no real savings in going with one or the other. So that's pretty much the extent of what I found.
So, uh, so total cost of that, um...
Um...
Would you say eighteen cents, three thousand?
Eighteen cents times three thousand, yeah.
Five hundred and forty dollars?
Somewhere, I want to say it was around six hundred, so yeah, it's not too great.
What was the cost of the actual printing of the material?
Uh, that I don't have, but the mailing that went out, uh, it's at last March, I think it was, was, it's around sixteen hundred, I believe.
Just for the printing?
I think that was the cost, it was the mailing that the finance committee had done.
Oh, no, that included postage?
Yes, yeah.
Right, so sixteen hundred might be the total cost of everything.
Right, so you're looking at around a thousand.
A thousand printing, six hundred mail, postage.
Yeah.
Yeah, our budget contains, I think, two thousand for printing and a thousand for postage?
I'm not sure.
I'm next.
I have a question. Tim, was that for, um, postage?
Yes.
Uh, is, um, postcard, or was that for an actual envelope with a warrant inside?
That was a postcard.
That's for a postcard, so...
Well, not really, would it, was...
Well, I just asked him, and Tim just, I asked him, and he said it was for a postcard.
George, George is actually right, it was a piece of paper that was folded and attached.
Right.
Okay, so like a, a one paper thing?
Yeah, it was a one, it was a one sheet.
All right, so I guess we'd have to agree, like, what is our mailing going to be? Is it going to be a one-page folded in an envelope? Is it gonna be a one-page with the outside with the address on it?
Yeah, I guess, I guess it would depend on the, you know, how much information needs to be distributed for a particular town meeting, um, or...
So are we, I guess, I'm gonna ask our board, are we sending out a postcard or a mailing, one page, to say, this is an upcoming meeting of, you know, an upcoming annual town meeting, please refer to the website for the warrant? Or are we gonna, 'cause to do the whole warrant, how many pages are in a warrant?
Uh, it varies.
With, with recommendations?
The last one, I want to say, was around ten pages, eight to ten pages.
I don't think the intention was to mail the warrant. I think the intention was to notify people that there was a meeting, first of all. And second of all, if there were any unusual items that we felt should be, um, in- informed to the public, that they would be there. If it was just a housekeeping issue, maybe, that wouldn't need to go in there. But if there was a large expenditure, or a change in zoning, or, you know, anything that would really be a change to the normal, um, state of affairs, should be in there. Can be a brief paragraph, or whatever, but just so that people know.
So that would also have to be reviewed by town councils. So town council would have to review to make sure that whatever we're sending out is not, is based on facts, and, you know, is only based on facts, and that we're not, um, sort of scripting how we want to vote to go one way or the other.
My question, first of all, you don't, you don't need to have to go to town council, 'cause you put the articles right on the website, so you put the article the same way it's written, right on the mailer, that's it. No decision, no nothing. Just put it out there so people know what they're gonna vote on when they go, that's it.
Okay. All right, Gary, I, I kinda agree. My understanding was it was gonna be, uh, a form of like a newsletter. Not, not anything to do with a viewpoint, but just, uh, just actual possibly facts that, that went with, you know? I'll go, I'll go to the fact that, you know, police station articles and so forth, you know, what the cost was, uh, you know, what the, the, oh, uh, tax rate would be with the items, things like that. Nothing to, um, convey a, a approval or disapproval. And that, like, I think would be something you could, you would put on the website with the, with the articles. So, my understanding was it was gonna be like a one-page newsletter, or something like that. When you investigated, Tim, did they give any, any, um, or cost of what the weight, any...
Uh, that was in the packet last week, or last meeting. I can pull that up if you want to continue, I can try and find that.
Okay, um, so I guess that would cost, there would be a cost there, if it was, you know, four pages, it's gotta be more than one page, or something like that.
I don't, I doubt we're on that much.
I mean, like, I would think that we, we would abbreviate everything, so that it would be all printable on one page. So you have, if you take this and fold it in half...
Right.
When you open it, you have a whole page.
Uh-huh.
Also, when it's folded like this...
You could have half, yeah.
One side is the address, and then, and this side would be your headlines, maybe. You know, new police station being built, bridge being repaired, cost, funding, you know, anything that's really relevant.
So, I guess my point would be this, um, do we want to come to an agreement on what the extent of the, of a mailing, we'll say for October, a special town meeting, when, do we want to come to an agreement on how the length of the newsletter would be now, or to the court?
Well, I haven't heard anything about what articles might be on that meeting, whether there's anything particularly controversial, or whether it's a long warrant, I have no information.
We haven't formulated the warrant at all, yes.
Charlie, can we just restrict it to one page?
That, that was kind of my point.
Yeah.
Yeah, restrict it to one page?
I would be in favor of one page, just folded in half, and...
And with headlines on, on the outside.
Right, right, I understand.
Who's gonna be responsible for the workload?
Hey, that was gonna be another question.
I'll volunteer, whatever you need, I'll do it for free.
Oh, yay.
Four hours.
Is that beyond your job description, Tim?
I can do it, whatever I'm directed to do.
There you go.
Gary wants to volunteer?
Absolutely. If it's good for the townspeople, I'm in.
All right, all right, um, as this board, do I want to, do I hear a motion to, to a one-page informational letter?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made.
I'll second it with discussion.
Okay.
I'd like to make sure that this works, that this is a doable thing. If we do it this time, and we find out that the cost is something outrageous, and it takes away two weeks out of the time, out of the norm of the office, then we have to readdress it. Okay?
Yeah.
I'll make that part of the motion.
Okay.
I'd agree with that, Tim. All right, for us, I'd say we'll limit it to the one page. I'd make that motion.
Second.
On the paper?
Aye.
Yeah, call the board.
Call the board.
Yes, I, uh, okay, so, on the motion, as amended by Lisa, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So now, do we have any procedure we need to, to work on, in terms of coordinating?
Well...
Hey, Mom, it's me!
Well, I would say after the, after we formulated the, uh...
The warrant.
The warrant, we could sit down and have a little bit of a discussion, what's gonna go on, or...
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right?
Sounds good.
All right.
And is there a little difference of opinion between your board and ours?
Well, should be no opinions, just facts.
Yeah.
Do you want your recommendation to be there? I mean, that may be a point.
Well, that could be on the webs, we could put that on the warrant for the website. That would probably be something...
Right.
You would want to expedite, um, you know, sometimes in the past, the recommendations haven't come out with a warrant, maybe that's something we want to, uh, look to, to have.
And are we gonna have a joint meeting, or are you gonna have a separate meeting, and then we're gonna have a separate meeting? How, how do you foresee that?
For recommendations, or...
To review the warrant.
I don't know, uh, what's the timeframe for it?
We have on the calendar that the warrant review, or review of all articles would be the day after Labor Day, so whatever it is, the fourth, I think.
Okay.
I think it's better for us to be there, I mean...
Yeah.
Not necessarily for a big article, but for something else, maybe, yeah.
Sure.
Actually, Mike just corrected me, it's the meeting after that, the second meeting of the month.
Which would be when?
Which is...
The second, right?
The sixteenth.
Sixteenth?
Sixteenth, yep. Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I guess we're good.
Okay, shall we move to the back room for the rest of our meeting?
Okay, um, onto Board of Select, item one. Review the bid for fiscal year 2020 through fiscal year 2022 revaluation program to PK valuation group.
We should have chair in this panel.
There's a copy of the contract.
Uh, make a motion to approve and sign.
Okay, motion made. Do we have a second?
What are we voting on?
It's the, uh, the contract for the reevaluation of...
Reevaluation.
Okay, yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next would be amendments to number two, amendment number two to the engineering service agreement between Greeman, Patterson, and, uh, Inc. for the South Main Street Bridge, and amendment two for this, with the same company on the Locust Street. So Jim Noes, if you, please come forward.
Hi, Jim.
Hey, how are you doing? You wanted to give us a little update, I understand?
Yeah, on the amendments themselves?
Uh-huh, yes.
Okay, on the amendments, um, there are two of them, one's for Locust Street, and one's for South Main Street. The Locust Street one is work that we did actually last August. I was gonna invoice that out last August, thinking that both South Main Street and Locust Street were the same contract, under the same value, and then I found out later it wasn't. And then I held off on that to see how South Main Street shook out. And that's why that one, at least Locust Street, is, is late. The South Main Street, we weren't sure what we finally were gonna do until May or so, the, um, uh, the bridge. So Locust Street, the extra was for, what happened was, when they laid the concrete deck, if you remember, there was a concrete deck, brand new one, um, they had problems with the machine, and if you rode over that bridge, it was, it was a rough ride. It wasn't, um, within the tolerance as Mass DOT wanted, so we ended up having to do a, uh, laser survey of the deck to see how much it was out of tolerance, 'cause Aetna was saying it was good, and we were saying, no, it was, you know, significantly out, and it was out, out to about an inch, it's only supposed to be a quarter inch from the grade, so it was out to about an inch. So, we finally got Aetna to agree to pave the road, um, and that work was done on their own dime, because it was their fault that the equipment was bad. The South Main Street amendment really covers all the work that happened within the past two years originally. That work was supposed to be done behind a port-a-dam, behind, you know, sandbags, so it was gonna be route-laid in the dry. For various reasons, Port-a-Dam said they couldn't use their system, we couldn't get the access directly from the abutting properties into the river, and we ended up doing the diving, which actually ended up doing a different type of grout that had never been used before underwater, um, for that purpose, so. There were mockups that we had to go to down in Fall River to check out which grout that, you know, come up with a grout that you could apply underwater, um, and there was a lot of back and forths, a couple of change orders with Aetna and whatnot. And also to give the board an update, too, we did get Aetna's, um, paid, their last pay requisition. Their contract's gonna be reduced by at least ten thousand dollars, um, and I'm working, I, I, I have, um, concerns with a few of the other items they're invoicing, it could be up to around thirty-four thousand dollars, so that contract will get reduced. That was just as of today, so we'll know better in a couple of weeks, but at least ten thousand, that contract gets reduced by at least ten.
All right, so what you're saying, it's gotta be a couple of weeks before you'll have that work?
Correct, yeah, yeah. Aetna had, they were supposed to have a full-time superintendent out there while Black Dog was working, um, they did not have one, so that cost should be coming back to the town. You know, Black Dog did, did an excellent job, they were very professional in what they were doing, we were pleased at that work that they did, so. They didn't necessarily need Aetna to supervise, that would've been, so I'm trying to say that, you know, that town should, that money should come back to the town.
So with that being said, should we be putting off our actions tonight until we know for sure what the sum would be?
Um, well, it's two different subjects.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, that, that is the, you know, the Aetna contract itself. This one here, um, that was included on that original, I forgot how much the town had appropriated, but that dollar amount, I know the last time we were here, it was covering both Aetna's and ours. You know, with all the extra work that we did to our original contract, and I had numbers here that broke it down, but I think the, actually, if you don't mind...
No problem. Let's get a...
It helps a little bit more, too.
Clear picture of what's going on.
Yeah. Yeah, because they're separate contracts and not together, I, I actually included them both together. So when we started this three years ago, the original sum of both projects was a hundred ninety thousand, seven hundred dollars was our, um, contract. The first amendment on Locust Street, that increased, what happened there, Locust Street originally was gonna just paint the girders, um, and then there was talk about milling and overlaying the surface, and we had concerns, because it looked like some of the concrete underneath the, this is going back three years, underneath the pavement, there was a concrete deck, but we had concerns looking at the pavement, that the concrete, concrete deck was deteriorating. So we actually had a ground penetrating radar to, you know, look at the concrete deck, and everywhere where you see the red, that was totally deteriorated, everything in yellow was partially deteriorated, so pretty much the whole concrete deck needed actually to be replaced. And that was the, um, that was the cost increase on Locust Street under the first amendment. South Main Street ended up being a lot less when we looked at it, we didn't have to do a hydraulic study, quite a bit of others, so on the amendment number one, we reduced that by fifty thousand, three hundred. And so amendment number two, which is before you tonight on both projects, that would add almost fourteen thousand. So total, including, you know, additional work we have due for the Locust Street deck, plus all this additional work with, um, South Main Street over the last two years, the contract increases by about, off the top, it had eighty-three hundred dollars from the original one. So we did quite a bit of work extra that, and managed to pretty much, we did our best to keep everything, you know, as close to the original contract as possible.
Any questions?
No.
So how much of this work, extra work, was due to the delay in the start of the project? Are you not ready to answer that?
Pretty much all of it, it's pretty much all of it. You know, if, if this had gone, if it had gone, if we had done everything the way it was originally designed, and the way Aetna had a basic contract on, it would've been actually a lot less, it would've been pretty much the amendment number one, I won't say a lot less, but it would've been about fifty-six hundred dollars less than, so, total fifty-six plus, yeah, about fourteen thousand dollars less.
The, your inability to use the, uh, butter's land, did that cost us a substantial amount, or not?
It did, um, I mean, Aetna bid the project based on access for Grandpa's place, which there was an original verbal agreement that, that they could use the parking lot. Aetna did have problems, um, with just access from one side, they also wanted access from the other side. Aetna did have access from that other side, too, but then that agreement got pulled away from them, too, so there was, there was quite a few problems, both, you know, from what the town had told the bidders in the original bid, that they could get access on one side, and then having, you know, Aetna, Aetna needing access from both sides, but, yeah, so there was problems there, too.
You, you can't put a number on that, lack of access?
From our, from the engineering viewpoint, or from the overall project?
Overall.
Overall, yeah, pretty much both the amendments that, what was it, the two change orders that, um, Aetna had for a hundred seventy-five, that, um, three fifty, but some of that came in, if it's in the area, actually, I should know this, it's pretty much about a hundred seventy-five thousand increase in the construction, and pretty much fourteen on our part, uh, fourteen minus the Locust Street, I should, I should say that, so about ten on our part, so about a hundred eighty-five thousand.
Do I hear a motion?
Wouldn't have a choice, really, so motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jim, if you can talk to Aetna about having them remove their, uh, construction signs that have been covered over for two years, that are still there?
Yep.
At least that, they could do that.
And also, when, when are you gonna through the chair, when do you have that update, when will you have the update of, um, the final cost analysis?
As soon as Aetna gets that back to me, um, I'm sure there'll be a couple more back and forths on that, but, um, I know, I know at least, you know, they, their last pay requisition, there's at least ten thousand dollars coming in, but I, I should have that, uh, Aetna's, I'm gonna say in two weeks.
Okay.
You know, I'll send them an email tomorrow, and then when the next time the board meets, but I can, I'll be staying for an update on that.
Is this over with? The saga over with?
Yeah, and I don't mean to take too much time, too, I know, um, Kim Armstrong, who is the, our structural engineer, Dr. David, uh, there was a question about the load rating, and that's gotta come from the town, a request has to go from the town to District Five, I don't know if that's been done yet.
Right, yeah, right. Yeah.
Thank you.
All righty, very much.
Take care. Item number...
For discussion purposes, I'd like to ask a question. Why could we not get access, since that was so costly not to get access?
Well, my understanding is that Aetna, um, made assertions that they could do something. They, they never actually approached the property owner until after the contract was signed, and, um, he had, you know, his interests, and Aetna wasn't, uh, willing to, um, willing to go along with his interests, and then actually, the, like he, like Jim Noes said, the, uh, berm that they were gonna put around, Aetna never spoke to the company about, and they actually couldn't do it. So, we'll have to see, after this is all over, where we're gonna go. I, I have some questions about the way Aetna handled this situation, but we'll have, we have to get the full story before we go forward, I don't know if it'll be worth it, but...
Our futures, it's good to know.
Right, yeah.
Can we put on the next agenda, then, when we're gonna talk about the load bearing for the, uh, other bridge? Right, 'cause that has to come from us, correct?
Mm-huh.
That's what he just said, and that's, that's my understanding as well.
Which other bridge?
Um...
The...
The last bridge that we have to...
South, yeah.
The South Main Street Bridge, I'm all over the map right now.
Yeah, um...
On the four corner?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, wha- whether, whether they're...
To discuss with DOT?
Yeah.
Yeah, whether we're gonna put, like, a member, 'cause we don't want it to deteriorate any further, so, like, talk about that at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, item number three, chapter ninety, final reports on High Street, Copacoot Road, and Friends Street. And you have, um, before you, reports that, uh, Chuck Macumber filled out and has forwarded, uh, we will forward to, uh, Mass Highway with the completion of the projects. Anyone have any questions?
No.
Okay, hearing no discussion, a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Item number four is, uh, David has developed, uh, a policy for remote participation, uh, there were a couple of, um, of little amendments, um, one of them would be limited to, unless some, uh, major hardship, would be limited to four meetings per year. That's basically the only major issue. So, anyone have any discussion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve for a one-year, um, review.
Okay, um, motion made, uh, to approve with the, with one-year, um, limit on it, to see how it works.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number five is, um, in relation to a letter from Mr. Mendez about, um, what, uh, he described as, um, some, oh, adverse working conditions at town hall. You see that, and you see, um, the response from, uh, oh, Mark Rich, um, and he, one went to, uh, give any comments or discussion?
Nope.
George?
I'm not sure what, what this is, yeah.
Well, in rela-, in relation to, uh, Mr. Mendez's letter about certain working conditions...
Okay.
Well, there was more than that, sir.
Well, well, I'm gonna generalize, okay?
Okay.
And, um, there was some discussion with Mark Rich, um, he advised we could send a letter or email to, um, all employees, asking for them to give us any input, uh, on, uh, such working conditions, and, um, we would go from there.
Did we do that?
We have not yet.
But we voted to do that?
That was what we would be doing now.
Oh, okay. This would go to all departments?
Yes, it would go to all departments.
And exactly what, what are we asking employees?
Well, we would formulate an email, but would be, general, the generalization would be, uh, for any, um, input from them, uh, and any, there was no names in the letter, we would like this, you know, see names and so forth, before we went forward.
So this was arbitrary, an arbitrary letter?
Well, it was a...
Yeah, okay.
Letter that didn't have any specifics in it.
Right.
I will meet with anybody in private, and with, to tell the names.
Oh, I'd love to hear that.
We'll probably...
Mr. Chin?
Yes.
Uh, did you synopsize Mr. Rich's report?
Uh, or did you synopsize Mr. Rich's reply or did you, can, is it lengthy? Can you read it into the record? Just so I can know what was said, how it was said?
Well. It is kinda lengthy, uh, you could, you can, it's gotta be probably minutes.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Alright, so it'll be in a minute?
Right.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, could we s- let him have a copy later?
Right.
Would you like a copy?
I can see a photograph of the.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Okay, alright, um. So what is the motion?
That's what I'm waiting for.
Uh, well, I'm not clear exactly. Who is the question? I mean, this is a letter, we read the letter.
Well, right, right, there was a letter. This is a response to that letter and it would be, uh, I mean.
A response to Mark Rich's letter?
Ri- well, no. Uh, Mark Rich, uh, responded to David's inquiry in relation to the letter. He, he, um, Mr. Rich, uh, read the letter. He, uh, had made some suggestions. Basically, what that suggestion, uh, comes down to is if, um. We will send out an email, uh, providing, uh, the employees with the chance of, um, discussing or. Or informing on any, uh, issues they feel are pertinent and we would go from there.
Well, then I'll, I'll make a motion that we follow Mark Rich's, uh, recommendation since that's what we typically do anyways.
Uh-huh.
Uh, and, uh. Uh, so that's the motion, follow the recommendation of the attorney.
Okay, and, uh, and send out a, a letter or email, is that what you're saying?
Can I say something please?
Yes.
Think people might be a little awkward talking to the town's attorney. I think they should be talking to somebody neutral. Just a thought?
Well, I, I think first, the first step would probably be to see if there's any, any more, anyone else. Anyone wants to come forward with any information and then from there.
I think it should done anonymously, like I said, to somebody neutral, because somebody might feel awkward talking to.
I, I don't think.
The town employee, basically.
I don't think it's right to have people make anonymous, uh.
I wasn't anonymous.
Well, no, 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 what I'm saying is any, any one else making an anonymous, um. Complaint that we would then go and hire some.
Well, maybe not anonymous, but like I said, talking to town council, people are gonna feel awkward, I know that. So I would wanna talk to somebody totally neutral, totally neutral.
Well, that's, actually.
I think what happens is if you speak up in this town, it's gonna be repercussions.
Absolutely.
Well.
And there's no doubt about that.
Well.
And we all know that.
They're.
If the town's looking for reimbursement, you wanna spend a couple grand and if nothing happens, I'll reimburse you.
Um, I, I think first, first and foremost, if someone wants to come up with some information. That would be the first thing to do.
You know, be, before, uh, I'm gonna recant my, my motion.
Uh-huh.
I, I would like to see the letter that's going to go to the employees before I vote to do that.
Okay, so.
So we need to come up with a letter that's clear and unbiased and whatever else.
Alright, so, would you put that into some type of emotions as a, a directive? That be?
Okay, make a motion that, uh, that the letter to go to the employees be written and then approved by this board.
Okay, um, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made in seconded, uh, to, uh, have a letter formulated by, uh, the town administrator. And to forward it to this board for approval. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, um, minutes of the August fifth. Slaughter's meeting. Anyone have any? Um, I will make a comment on relation to, uh, the Conroy's and their concerns. I spoke to the chief of police about a potential, uh, truck speed survey on North Main Street. And also about the, uh, potential for having a state lease truck team, uh, visit the town time to time in the near future. Um, have you noticed, uh, I don't know, I, I had noticed a little bit less truck traffic on Long North.
Yes, actually me and Ally have noted that today, that we weren't disturbed at all during the day.
And part of that probably is that, uh, they have stopped, uh, the operations on the Slavage Road pit, K Harries and East has stopped. So hopefully that will rectify itself, but just so everyone knows.
I'll make a motion to approve on the minutes of Monday, August fifth.
Second.
A motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, police station update.
I think you guys can tell just by driving by, um, the major, um, accomplishments that have been done even within the last week. And since our last meeting, so, um, at any time if anybody wants to take a, uh, uh. You know, sit down and talk to any of the people that are working on that, that's their open door, um, just you gotta let them know.
Mm, sorry.
About the police station.
Oh, okay.
I mean, you drove, you drive by, it looks amazing, um, we're all really excited, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Getting going, um.
We got some of the major, um, problems taken care of with DDP this week, so that was a good accomplishment as well.
Was it a for, a formal?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know.
Is it, the guy had to put a head wall on, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Alright, um, as I just spoke to, um, North Main, uh, noise and traffic issue.
You think we can, think we can get some of that, those state cops and everything to come over on South Main Street and do something?
That's part of the plan, Stephen, uh, told, uh, I asked the chief if he could make it throughout the town. Cause I do have, I do have a silver here again for you. What I called the other day, they said that they'd send Chuckie over the next day to pick it up. Definitely a flat tire coming when you hit that.
Yikes.
Wow, what is it? What is it?
A chunk of steel. One of XL truck.
Oh.
Yep.
Should've brought that to the judge.
Can't talk when you go there. I could've thrown it though. Go, go ahead.
Alright, um. That being said. Board of Health. You have a, um, you had spoken about the cash options at the transfer station.
Yes.
Alright. Derek, do you have some information on that?
Yeah, um, first I apologize, I think I got a wicked cough, so I apologize. We, we had had discussions the last week or so, um, about going cashless at the transfer station. Um, I discussed with David also about going cashless and checklist at the transfer station. The more I've thought about it, um, the more I don't know if I wanna go checklist as well as cashless. Um, I really don't mind going cashless. I don't mind going to the card, um, but I, I don't like giving people no other option than the card. So I would like to see if we could go cashless but keep checks. Um, other than that, I'm fine with going cashless up there.
What would the objection be to a check?
A, you don't really have to worry about theft because the checks are made out to town of free town, so I get cash, obviously it's easy to slide into a pocket.
No, no, I mean, what, what is the objection to taking checks? You said that.
No, I don't, I actually, my objection would be to eliminate checks.
No, I, no, I, what I meant was, what was it, who didn't want to do checks? I don't care who it was, but was there a reason that they didn't want to handle checks?
Uh, I think it was just a, let's just go straight to the card. I think that was just kind of the thought.
Okay.
Like, let's eliminate both and go straight to card. And the more I thought about it, the more I was like, eh, I, I don't mind giving people a second option.
Right, I mean, you have to, I mean, I would think.
Why would you do that to the people in town? To live here, the elderly, people who don't have debit cards, credit cards?
That's kind of my, that's kind of my thought.
I mean, if nobody's been stealing all these years.
Ma'am, okay, but, but ma'am, okay, hold on, um, when you wanna ask a question, just direct it to me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, but that being said, uh, um, I, I have a question, do we take checks now?
Yes.
Okay, so it wouldn't be any change?
There wouldn't be any change.
Okay, alright.
Has there been a problem with the way we're doing things?
No, there hasn't. It's, it's been fine. We haven't had an issue. We haven't had money stolen or anything like that. It's, I think it's just.
Well, can I stop you there for a second? We don't know, we really don't know. And years ago, I do remember there was, there was an issue, probably twenty years ago. But that's beside the point, but you wouldn't know if there was money missing. I mean, really.
If they wanna throw slips away and pocket the money, I guess, no, I would not know, but.
We've tried to go.
When I count the money every week to the slips, it's, it's been right.
Right. But the town hall has tried, has, am I not correct, we've eliminated cash as much as possible in the town hall?
For some of the departments.
Yeah, okay, so this is nothing unusual.
No, and, and those departments as well, to the best of my knowledge, are still accepting checks. They, they've gone cashless, but they are still accepting checks.
Checks and credit cards should be sufficient for everyone.
I mean, even my mother, at eighty-six, she didn't have a credit card. Where she lived in West Bridgewater, she went to the dump. I mean, you have people still that don't have debit cards or credit cards because they come from the old school. And, you know, to write out a check or somebody's handicap can't write out a check. All they can do is hand cash. I mean, you're putting the people at a liability not to be able to use something that we are due, which is our dump.
I mean, some of the fees that we came up with last week are like five bucks.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I can understand, I can understand this young lady's concern.
No, absolutely. I'm not.
And, and let me ask, are the slips numbered?
Yeah.
Okay, so they have a number at the bottom, so if you're missing slips, they have to be accounted for somewhere, right?
Right, I could, I could sit there and go through the numbers and figure out, you know, we're missing a slip here, where is it? We're missing a slip there, where is it? So, to thi- to this point, to the best of my knowledge, we have not had an issue with money missing.
I'd be a devil's advocate on this issue.
Mm.
Uh, if there was no slip handed out, there would be no way you would know, right? I went to the dump and the attendant told me ten dollars for your pile. I handed the attendant ten dollars and they didn't give me a receipt and I didn't ask for one.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna get a receipt. If you didn't ask for one, I know hypothetically, yes, at that point, the attendant could take the receipt, throw it away.
Right, exactly. I mean, it, it's, it's never a good policy to just have cash in my mind, but that's.
I'm, when it comes to the money situation at the transfer station, I will do whatever the, I, I am. I do not have a strong opinion one way or the other. I don't mind keeping the cash. I don't mind going cashless, keeping the check. I would say my only thing that I do not wanna do is eliminate cash and check. That, that's the one thing I would like to not see.
Can we get a percentage of how much cash we use, how many checks we use at the transfer station? Is there like a breakdown? We receive this much in cash and that much in checks?
It's probably eighty, twenty cash to check at this point. Yeah, eighty, twenty.
Now, we don't do anything with credit card, debit card.
Right now, no.
Okay, so.
And I don't know how much that would change the number. I don't know if that would eliminate a lot of the cash. Or if it would, or if it wouldn't even touch, I, I really don't know.
Um, could I ask you to check with some of the communities in the area, see what they do? They, if they accept cash or not, you know, and if they, or has.
When I was, when I was up there this weekend, I did mention to acquaintance people that we might be going cashless. That that was something that we were gonna discuss and overall, the, the thought was pretty positive. It seemed like most people were fine with that. But I, I do, I do anticipate if we eliminate cash that there is gonna be some pushback. I would, I would anticipate that.
How many other departments use the debit credit machine? Ally?
Three.
Okay.
I'm putting treasurer and collector together, so that would be four.
Okay.
Mark? Excuse me, excuse me ma'am, Mark.
Not really, a dog license fifteen bucks or whatever.
They don't, they still are on the old, old schedule. They still take, take everything except for the.
Okay.
How much annual lead does the transfer station bring in, dollar amount?
Um.
Approximately?
Say maybe around seventy, seventy to eighty.
Seventy thousand. So under, under a hundred thousand. And what are the fees that the town is, that we're gonna, the town's gonna incur for utilizing a credit card system or a debit card system? Is it one percent, two percent, three percent?
There would be a charge to, there would be a charge to the consumer that the, I believe the bank gets the money. We don't even get the money on it. Um, I think it's.
Well, I know when I use a, utilize a credit card, the vendor, I, if I pay a hundred dollars on a credit card, they don't charge me a hundred and three dollars. Some, some outfits will, some vendors will charge me extra because I'm using a card.
There would, there will be a charge if you're using the card up there, for sure.
So, are the people, so the people are gonna be informed that there is gonna be that charge added to the, to the fee? So the ten dollar fee may be ten dollars and thirty cents or?
Ten dollar fee would actually be more like twelve fifty.
So there's gonna be a two and a half dollar charge, upcharge, a twenty-five percent upcharge?
I believe that.
The question, the question is, is this is costing, it's not really costing the town anything, it's costing the townspeople more.
Yep.
If it costs the townspeople, let's say, because on a fifty dollar charge, it might only be a two and a half dollar fee. So on average, if it costs the townspeople an extra five percent, do we have five percent graph right now? And I.
We don't know.
We don't know, but it, it, it just seems.
In the town hall.
Okay.
One simple question.
Alright, but folks, just so you know, th- this is an idea that's being floated, it's not, we're not, we're not.
And, and it's a good idea because the young people, the young people who do their own yard work, I mean mostly, you know, the people who are senior citizens who are ninety aren't. Loading up their trucks and taking them to the dump. It's mostly younger, able-bodied people who are more, more likely to use, uh, cashless type of thing.
Why couldn't you devise a cheap system to scan their license and just put down what they're getting rid of, that way you keep a track of everything? Whether they pay cash or check or whatever, just scan their license. Uh, everybody's doing it.
Well, I don't, I don't know if we'd, uh.
Just something like that, take their plate number down, something to force them to get a receipt, whether they pay cash or checks.
So, what you're, you're saying is to?
Well, I can't, I can't force anybody to take the receipt. We write a receipt out for every single person that comes up.
Well, but if you scan their license, then it's, it's in the system. They can't just delete it, you know what I'm saying?
Well, that's, now you're talking about getting a license scanner up there.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know how expensive that is, but.
I, I don't either.
Well, alright, well, okay, it's info, it's, we're on informational, uh, point at, at the present time, so. Alright, well, it certainly needs more studying.
Could, could we do a survey of the people that used the transfer station and just say the next hundred people, ask them?
Oh, I, I did say this weekend when I was up there, I did, uh, I, I told just about every single person that came in.
Okay.
Uh, we're gonna be, we're gonna have at least a discussion about going cashless and the basic vibe was positive.
Okay.
People were, alright, cool, alright, cool.
Okay.
But I, I do understand the, what you're saying about, you know, some people are not gonna really, they may not have a card. They don't like to bank that way. I, I understand that point. That's why I feel like the check is a, is a good compromise to that, but again. The, this is not one of the, the hills that I'm gonna die on, so whatever the board feels is best to, to go with is what I would do.
You could put a cash machine or a lock drop box, anything.
How many, how many people pay their bills online now? How many people have checks? Really?
Well, I pay my bills online, but I have a checkbook.
Yeah, but very, really, and I go, I have to write a check out to something and you go, ugh. You don't wanna have to write a five dollar check out that's taking more energy. Come on, this town has worked well for how many years and all of a sudden?
Alright. Well, this is just discussion, uh.
And you know what, not all of a sudden that elderly, that still go to the dump, believe me, in sixty-five, I still can go.
Alright, okay. Alright, we're gonna be moving on now. Um, personnel board.
Okay, um, I have, do you wanna talk about your deposition at the cemetery? I know you're all set.
We're, we're good. You've, you've got our recommendation and we were, I'd say we were equally happy with both candidates. We were kinda looking for a tiebreaker. Uh, we found one, so you, you have our recommendation.
So I have in front of you, um, Timothy Dacey, S. Sexton, effective, um, August twentieth, twenty nineteen.
I'll make a motion.
It's gonna be the part-time laborer in the cemetery. It's not.
It's not a laborer per se, cause that's a classified position that comes with its own. We had to find something to call it that didn't make it a union position.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay, I'll make the motion, uh, we appoint Timothy Dacey.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, and George Grunwell to the building committee, effective August fifteenth, twenty nineteen.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and we have the resignation of Matthew Denal as a truck driver, effective August fifth. He never released.
I'll make, no, I'll make the motion, we accept that resignation.
Second.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
All set?
Alright, um, anything else for public comment? Alright, good, alright. Uh, the board will be, uh, going into executive session, uh, presently, um, under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, Paragraph Ace, uh, Subparagraph Three, discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body or the chair, so de- and the chair so de- declares, the chair so declares. Um, Excel Recycling LLC versus Town of Freetown. And secondly, uh, Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, Paragraph A, Subparagraph Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the public union, Public Employee Union Local eleven forty-four Luna, uh, Highway Unit, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and the chair so declares. We will not be, uh, uh, returning to open, uh, by, so, if I could have a motion on that?
Someone will-
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
Mr. Grunwell?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, yes. Have a good night, folks.